Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Springfield Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, December fifteenth. Phil, if you would please read the roll call.
Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio?
Here.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Florian?
Sir.
Ms. McQuaid?
Here.
And Ms. Choi, absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Phil. If you would look, oh, you want to do your?
Well, yeah, just quickly again, for those that may be watching the meetings, again, due to the Zoom requirements, the planning board is is holding two meetings for each item. New items will be heard tonight and presented. The planning board will be allowed to ask questions. However, the new items will not be voted on. They will be continued. At that point, the planning board hearing will be broadcast on Focus Springfield, which will then allow the general public to watch it and provide comments if they wish to do so. And then at the next regular meeting of the planning board, any comments received will be read into the record, and then those items will be voted on. So tonight, we have three continued items and three new items. So just to quickly, again, for those who may be watching for these particular items, under the public hearings, continued zone change number three, two, two, five, or seven ninety-seven, Berkshire Avenue. Again, I've been in contact with the petitioner again, and he's still waiting for his plans from his engineer. I guess the engineer had COVID, so he's running a little behind, but he, you know, at this point, he is still moving forward, but is not ready to present tonight. So I would just ask the board that this item be continued until the meeting on the fifth.
Okay, before we do that, Phil, we have two minutes from the October twentieth and November third meeting. I would accept a motion regarding these minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do you want to do roll call, Phil?
Yeah, so voting to accept the minutes, Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi, absent. So again,
No problem.
If I could just get a motion for that to be continued.
We could have a motion to continue the hearing for zone change number three, two, two, five, seven ninety-seven Berkshire Ave. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Voting to continue, Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi, absent. This item will be moved to the January fifth meeting. Also, Gloria, just quickly, under public hearings, new, again, just I did get some people wondering about this proposal. So in case they are watching, I would like to just kind of get this out of the way, the proposed subdivision plan for Veterans Way. Again, I am still waiting for a full review by the Department of Public Works on that particular development. So like Whispering Brooks, which we continued, I would prefer that the planning board have that approval in hand before we hear this item. So I would ask that Veterans Way be continued as well until the January fifth meeting, and hopefully at that point, we'll be able to move forward with it.
I'll make a motion for the subdivision plan for Veterans Way to be put on hold.
Is there a second?
Second.
So voting to continue, Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi, absent. So that will be continued in January fifth. Back to the public hearings, continued. This is the second hearing for the subdivision plan for Whispering Brook Estates, the owner Balden Street LLC, and the date is July twenty twenty-one. Just so the planning board is aware, revised plans were submitted to the Department of Public Works today, as well as a letter addressing a number of comments. You know, I had a number of conversations with the director of DPW, Chris Signoli, and he is satisfied that the that the proposed plans have met their requirements. You know, there are still some minor details that need to be addressed, but they have they have addressed the majority of the issues that that the Department of Public Works had. On the sidewalk issue, the plans were submitted that that show sidewalk has been continued around to lot one. I know Rob Lebec is here from Lebec Associates. I'm not sure if the board wants to see that, but that plan can be brought up. On another note, I know the board, I sent the board a letter from the Outer Belt Civic Association regarding a number of issues that they were raising. You know, I'm not going to go through all the comments, but I did want to stress to the board that, you know, as I said to Walter Gould, the president of the Outer Belt Civic Association, you know, this this plan has been fully reviewed by the Department of Public Works. It's actually, you know, in the twenty years I've been doing this, this is probably one of the plans that I've seen reviewed the most. So, you know, under his comments, they had a number of issues regarding drainage and water issues. Again, I can only stress that the Department of Public Works has fully reviewed and approved the proposed drainage plans for the development. There are going to be a number of drainage areas that will collect the water. One of the comments was who was going to maintain those at the end of the project. When the project is completed, the Department of Public Works will maintain these drainage areas. There are going to be easements. They are going to be located on privately owned land, but there will be easements that will need to be recorded on the deed, which will allow the Department of Public Works to enter the property and maintain these in the future, moving forward, because they, you know, these areas do need to be maintained as sediment fills them. That was an issue that, you know, I had at the beginning of this of who was going to do that. But again, there's a number of comments with regards to water, you know, what effect will heavy rainfall have? Again, I can only stress that DPW has reviewed the entire drainage plan. There are a number of comments about the vernal pool. I have spoken with the Conservation Commission. There is no vernal pool on this property. There is an isolated wetland on the property, and that will not move. You know, the question was where would the vernal pool be located? There is no vernal pool, and that isolated wetland will remain where it is. You know, they have to be, they have to work around the wetland issues. There was also a comment about what kind of markers will show the conservation area during construction. The Conservation Commission requires that the wetlands be marked. There are actually blue flags that will outline all of the conservation areas during construction. Those markers do not remain. So, you know, at the end of construction, there is going to be no markers for the conservation area, but they certainly are there during construction. With regards to the crosswalk, you know, that was a condition that Mr. Signoli had that he would like to see where the sidewalk ends just beyond house number one. He would like to see a crosswalk put in to connect back to the other side. I did send the board out a revised conditions, if this gets approved, that reflect that. With regards to safety issues and traffic, again, I just I have to defer to DPW. This is a standard cul-de-sac design. So I know Walter had mentioned that he was concerned about school buses being able to turn around, but I, you know, the cul-de-sacs are designed so that that can happen, as well as trash trucks and city plows. You know, the design of the houses and whether they're going to be spec or that's really beyond the planning board's purview, as well as a number of the other comments. So again, at the end of the day, I truly believe that this has been a well-designed project. The Department of Public Works has been happy with the engineer, and at this point, I don't believe there's any reason for this to be continued, but I'll defer to the board if they have questions for either me or for the engineer.
Phil, just a quick question on the school buses. I know he commented, and I think you just said it, school buses are going down the street, right, and turning around the end?
I mean, I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure at the end of the day whether a school bus is going to come down that street or not, but that really is not a, I suppose if the kids are, they're either going to walk to school or get picked up, but I, I mean, I'm not sure I can answer whether there's going to be a dedicated school bus that picks up kids on Whispering Brooks. I don't know.
I was just wondering, because he was concerned about them on Allen Street. So I was just wondering what his concern was and?
Well, I think he was concerned that it was Allen Street's a busy road. But, you know, like all busy roads, once a school bus stops, if the lights go on, you're supposed to stop. But I, you know, that really is not a, it's not a concern for the planning board. Obviously, it's a concern for DPW with traffic issues. But again, you know, seventeen houses is not a significant increase to traffic compared to what's there on Allen Street now.
Okay. Go ahead, Leo.
Okay, just the concern that you sent out to us, from the last meeting, I thought I understood that there was going to be another meeting between the group with the Outer Belt Civic Association where all of these issues would have been addressed. Did they get a chance to hear what you're telling us tonight in terms of the response to all of the issues they had here?
Well, not with the developer. I've certainly had numerous conversations with Mr. Gould. But, you know, again, I know the attorney, Frank Fitzgerald, has met with the Outer Belt a number of times. They were supposed to have a meeting, I think, on the seventh, but I think there was a mix-up, so there wasn't. You know, I leave it to the board of whether you guys want to make him go back here. You know, at this point, you know, I get the concerns, but, you know, they have met with the neighborhood, you know, and, you know.
So I was under the understanding that they were supposed to meet last week to try to straighten out all of the concerns.
Well, again, I believe the Outer Belt had a meeting, but there was some mix-up that the developers were not there. I know I spoke to Attorney Fitzgerald, who had contacted Mr. Gould and explained the mix-up, but again, I had a conversation with Mr. Gould as well. But.
If it's helpful, I could try to answer that through the chair.
We can just give you a name and address.
Rob Lebec from our Lebec Associates here, representing Baldon Street LLC for the proposed seventeen lot subdivision Whispering Brook Estates. The, I think Mr. Dromy's comments are accurate. Mr. Fitzgerald was supposed to meet with the Outer Belt Civic Association. I believe there was a mix-up. I do not believe they did meet. We did have an opportunity through your planner, through the letter that was provided to your planner. We had an opportunity to review that in detail. I do, as mentioned by your planner, believe that all those comments have been addressed. There was comments related to traffic, also water, and other questions related to the wetlands. All of those have been addressed, and I do think that Mr. Fitzgerald intended to, Attorney Fitzgerald intended to communicate with them, but that did not happen, so.
It might be a good idea that no matter what happens tonight, that you continue to have a dialogue with the Outer Belt Civic Association so that you maintain a good relationship with them, especially since it appears that most of the answers have been dealt with, and some of them cannot be dealt with, because it would be, for instance, the school buses, that comes out of the transportation of the school department.
Yes, ma'am. We fully intend to communicate. We understand that this is the first step in a long process, obviously, through the construction process, as well as the construction of the single-family homes to be located here. We expect that the absorption rate for projects like this would take us into a multi, multiple-year project, and fully intend to maintain relationships. The contact to date has been Mr. Attorney Fitzgerald, and I believe that will continue along through the duration of the project, unless for some reason there's some change in the responsible party on site, and they would certainly be available for contact as well.
That's fine, and I thank you for that, but it might, and this is just my personal statement, that it might be helpful, that other than Mr. Fitzgerald, if you could also show up.
I would be happy to. Yep, the contact had been Mr. Attorney Fitzgerald. However, we are more than ready to be available for any of the next needs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do any of the board members have any other questions? If there are no other questions or concerns, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you very much.
Voting to close the hearing, Mr. Cunningham is absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi. Just so the boards know, I don't believe you need to read all the modifications. I would just vote if your board does so, chooses to vote in favor, that they just add the modifications. I will add those to the minutes. And also, just so everybody is aware, as part of the process as well, the approval of the planning board, prior to any work being constructed, you know, the developer also needs to enter into a performance agreement, you know, and provide a bond or cash in the amount that DPW determines the road will cost. So that will be, that will be done prior to any work getting started. That ensures that, you know, for some reason, the development doesn't get finished, the city can utilize that money to finish the street. So that's a big part of the whole process. So on that note, if someone wants to make a motion to?
Right. If somebody would like to make a motion regarding this petition?
I'll make a motion to approve the definitive subdivision of Whispering Brook Estates, obviously with the recommended modifications listed.
I'll second. Thank you.
So voting to approve the Whispering Brook subdivision, Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi, absent. So the motion's been approved.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Appreciate your time.
Phil, if we could do the first new public hearing?
Well, there's actually, there's actually one more continued.
Balden Street, I apologize.
For a site plan review, South Side, South Side, Alden Street, et al. Again, I did send out a revised PowerPoint presentation. It was a large email, so I'm not sure everyone was able to open that, but the developers are here. If they want to just, either you could bring it up or I can. I think the big thing the board was looking for was the renderings of the proposed building.
Yes, if that could happen, I appreciate it, because I could not get it on two of my computers.
Absolutely. Hi, this is Katie Pactor from SLAM. We have our team here this evening, Will Granberry and Mark Wixton from Bowler. I also have Mark Rhodes and Emily Sparity from SLAM, as well as Bill Guerrero and Kevin Roy here from Springfield College. So I think Will is going to pull up the presentation for us this evening. Thanks, Will. This is really going to look pretty familiar to you. We can probably skip forward to the colored site plan. No changes really, since we were last before you. No major changes really. This is just our proposed Health and Science Center building. We are Alden Street to the north, Sheffield and Wilberham bookend our site. And if you recall, we are basically removing a parking area, extending the campus green to connect over to the larger Stonehill College campus. Last week, or last month, when we were here, we did have some requests for some additional information in terms of some dimensioning and possibly some materials plans. So if, I don't know if you guys did receive better prints of what you need, but we do have that included in this presentation here. So if we want to go ahead and move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I did send that out to the board.
Super, super. I just wanted to make sure everybody had what they need, so they can review it properly. So if we just go to the next slide, this is basically detailing our site layout, which gives you an idea of scale and sizes here, and, you know, really taking taking away a lot of parking and replacing it with the green is kind of one of our favorite parts about about this new site plan. Obviously, the building, which Mark will talk a little bit more to in a few minutes, but basically concrete walkways. We've got a nice paver plaza area that we're working to connect to this pedestrian spine down at the bottom of the plan. That's really our main connector into the larger Springfield campus site, and just trying to make that a safe and, you know, easy connection. If we go into the next site plan, it gives a little bit more information on materials. So here you can see there's pavers in that plaza area. The rest of the walks are concrete. We do have a large area of lawn that's depicted as white at this point. I didn't pull up the planting plan, but we do have that, basically, a lot of lawn area. We do have some additional trees that we're working to sort of reforest that area, just provide a little bit more shade, canopy, and so forth. If you recall, we are limited by the Buckeye Pipeline, which you'll see running north, south on the plan there. So we need to stay out of that easement as much as possible. We are in the process of working through our approvals with them as well. But I just wanted to give you guys an idea of the bounds of the project, as well as the materials, a little bit more clearly. Will's going to talk.
I just want to interrupt you, please. Somebody has noise going on in the back? If people could mute, if somebody, if they're in an office and other people are talking?
That could be my office. I apologize if it is. I came here for quiet. Figured it would be gone.
Also, unless the board members have any objections, can we see more of the pictures? Because we did see this last time.
Absolutely. We can fast forward right down to the rendering.
That's what we want.
No, not at all. Yeah, no, this is kind of the thing that we did want to follow up with you all on in terms of providing a rendering, just to help you envision the project a little bit better. So this view, we're looking towards the building from the southeast corner, over that plaza area. And then we do have another view in the next slide, from the northwest of Alden and Sheffield, so that you can get an idea of the building from that angle. And I can actually, I can pass it to Mark to talk a little bit more about the building itself. There is some strategic design in terms of how the building facade is displayed from, you know, the campus side versus the city side, the street side. So, Mark, maybe you can?
Yeah, so Will, want to go back to the slide previous? Thank you. So this represents, you can see the campus green and foreground, as Katie mentioned, that paver plaza that runs over within the easement. We have a fifty-foot easement that we have to respect in certain ways with Buckeye Jet Fuel, the jet fuel line. The building is predominantly brick, very sympathetic to the campus. We're matching Judd Hall, one of the older buildings on campus across the street with the brick color. We have metal panel that, and window colors that also match a lot of what happens on Springfield College's campus. At the entry, which is the corner, the glass corner, you're seeing just beyond the paver plaza, that is a cast stone. That is more like a limestone-looking cast stone, so it's lighter in color to break the scale and really promote the pedestrian entry on this side of the building and scale it to a two-story scale. The building overall, it was asked last time, the sixty-three feet on this side, from the green space to the top of the brick, and it's an additional eleven feet for the screen wall. That screens the mechanical that you see floating on the roof beyond. If we go to the next image, what you're seeing here is, again, it's sort of the inverse. We do mark that two-story scale with the brick that comes up. This side is really predominantly a lot of the laboratory spaces and teaching spaces within the facility. Most of the faculty offices are on the other side, which overlook the campus green with more of that smaller punched window aesthetic. Here we have metal, metal panel, brick, the same color, window system, as clear glasses we can get to meet the energy standards that we're trying to meet with this facility. And again, we screen, we set back the penthouse, and we screen the mechanical equipment, so it's not going to be seen by anybody, pedestrian or vehicular.
Do any of the board members have any questions?
Yeah, I have a handful of questions here. And just to let the board know, the DPW is in the process of reviewing the site plan. There's nothing, I would say, that strikes me as of anything of great concern. You know, there's probably a lot of technical comments, you know, related to the site plan that we'll be addressing with the design engineer. The one question I did have, and I don't know if we have a rep from Springfield College on the line, is the plan that is provided, it conflicts with the parking lot relocation plan in terms of where the crosswalks are on Sheffield Street. In last week, the last meeting, I did have a question regarding what kind of traffic measures were being implemented there. I know there was a question, there might be a race intersection or raised crosswalks. Has it been determined what that is going to be?
I don't know, Bill or Kevin can answer that.
Oh, sorry, that I was, I was trying to answer. I was muted. So Kevin Roy's from your college. Sorry about that. So we are, we do have a meeting scheduled in the next, you know, in the next couple of weeks to kind of talk about, as we kind of tie together the parking lot and the building, as you're talking about, to make sure that we, you know, we strategically place those in that, you know, we run that by the city to make sure that it makes sense with them, but we haven't quite gotten there yet, just kind of which, you know, firm at this point, we believe SLAM will be kind of leading that charge for us, but we don't have a final placement or design for those.
And my second, my second question is for, at the intersection of Wilberham Ave. and Alden Street, on the southwest corner, there's a crossing that crosses over Wilberham Avenue. And I was just wondering if Will or anybody could explain exactly, because it looked like the detectable warning panels for the ramp are not at the street line, and I haven't seen that ever before. I was wondering, and there was a call-out that said that the granite would be flush with the road. So I was wondering if you could just kind of explain how that is to be constructed?
I mean, I can, I can jump in there a little bit. I think, are you talking about the, I'm talking about the south?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, at the intersection right there, yeah, that little area.
So that should line up with the granite. The idea is that lines up with the granite curve, and then we have a flush condition going into that crosswalk.
Yeah, it looks like the detectable warning panels are?
Oh, I see what you're looking, you're looking at the ramp here.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I just, typically in the city, we have those, the warning panels are right kind of at the street line.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, back. So I was just wondering if you could explain?
Yeah, and I think we're looking to provide that cue that you're changing, you know, changing the grade for somebody that is, you know, impaired. I can see what you're saying. I can see what you're saying. You're suggesting that the, the detectable warning papers would also be right up against that crosswalk where you come into the street. Is that?
Correct. Yeah, okay.
And I think.
Theoretically, there'll be, those panels will stay, but there will also be an additional panel at the street line.
Right. Yeah. And I think that we, that adding in an additional panel for safety is totally feasible. At that edge. Yeah.
Thank you, Leo. Are there any other questions? If there are no other questions from the board, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you. Phil, if you would do roll call.
Voting to close the hearing, Mr. Cunningham is absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi absent. Hearing is closed. Again, as it was similar with the, with the subdivision, I'm not sure we have to read the, the entire conditions. I will add those to the, to the minutes in the approval letter.
Okay. I will accept a motion on this petition.
I'll make a motion to, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review for Alden Street. Spring, the petitioner is Springfield College with the modifications listed.
Second. Thank you.
Voting to approve the site plan review. Mr. Cunningham absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. Choi absent. Motion approved.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Under, under new items, public hearings new, a liquor license, it's change of location, package store liquor license. Location is from 28 Virg Street moving to 1690 1706 Boston Road, which is known as Haymarket Square. The petitioner, Taylor John, Inc., doing business as TJ's Wine and Spirit.
Who would like to speak towards this petition? If you would state your name and address, please?
My name is Sam Wilson, representing 28 Virg Street in Springfield.
And my name is Attorney Jane Mantelius. Yeah, on behalf of Tyler John, Inc. as well.
Okay. Can somebody talk about this petition, please?
Jane, you want to talk or you want me to?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do so. This is a petition for a change of location for a package store located at 28 Virg Street in Springfield to Haymarket Square on Boston Road and Springfield. Mr. Wilson is the principal of Tyler John, Inc., who is the applicant, and he has executed a lease the owner of that property for the operation of said liquor store at that location. And he has received the appropriate votes of the entity. We've included a copy of the lease in our package as well as a copy of the vote, the required financials, and copies you should have received that went out December 2nd. Copies of the payments for the butter's notices as well as the payments for the publication in the Republican. The included documentation also includes the payment to the alcoholic beverage commission as well as the city of Springfield. If the board would like to ask some other questions for us, it's pretty straightforward. Mister, or the applicant is unfortunately having to move from his current location due to the current landlord changing either use of his building or for some other reason for that landlord's business purposes. So TJ's Wine is gonna, and liquor is gonna have to go to a new location. Unfortunately, they were able to find a spot at Haymarket Square.
What will you be next to at Haymarket Square?
I believe that Mister, that the applicant has a choice of two different locations on Haymarket, Haymarket Square. And I don't know if Mr. Wilson has had any further communication with the landlord with respect to which one of those places was, was chosen.
It, it looks like it's going to be the old Chuck E. Cheese location.
Okay. Thank you. Do any of the board members have any questions?
Anything from the neighborhood council? The Indian Orchard Neighborhood, I think it's Indian Orchard, isn't it over there?
Yes. Now, I haven't, have you been to the Indian Orchard Citizens Council?
I have not.
Well, I think it's important that you get in contact with them and let them know what your plans are.
Well, we, we have been, we have been in contact with them before because we were looking at a different location. So they know we're in the process of trying to secure a new location.
Okay, but they don't know.
It's not a far move. It's not like they're going from another area.
No, it's just practically just down the street.
Right, right.
Okay, I would urge you though to keep them informed of where you're gonna go.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Hearing no, can other questions or concerns from the board? I will entertain a motion to continue this hearing.
Motion to continue the hearing.
That can.
So voting to continue the hearing until January 5th, Mr. Cunningham is absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi absent. So this, this item will be brought back January 5th.
Thank you very much. And we will reach out and make sure that the council is aware of the new location.
Because I think, yeah, I think the license commission is probably going to ask you the same thing. So I would just touch base with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so under the next public hearing new, it is a zone change number 3227 for 914 Boston Road. Just so the board is aware, this was an error on my part with the, on the agenda as well as within the analysis, the, the zone change is actually from Residence B to Business B. I have on the agenda, it's Business A to Business B. The petition indicates the correct zoning. I, I was just copying and pasting and didn't double check my work. And the petitioner is 22 SAC Self-Storage Corporation.
Good evening. My name is Paul Malik. I'm a lawyer at Doherty Wallace Pillsbury and Murphy, One Monarch Place Springfield. Also on the line is the District Vice President for U-Haul, Levi Paramer. This is a zone change petition for the rear portion of 914 Boston Road from, as Phil says, Residence B to Business B. The petitioner recently and unwittingly installed five self-storage unit buildings in the rear portion of the property, which is the residential B portion. The petitioner is contrite and recognizes that it should not have placed those buildings without permits and not in a residential zone. And therefore is seeking to rectify its mistake and problem by having the relevant portion of the property zoned to Business B, which is consistent with the front part of the property. The use of this property for self-storage units is highly compatible with the petitioner's business, which is moving. There is a high demand for self-storage in the, particularly that area. The five buildings are adequately screened for the most part. And the petitioner is willing to add more plantings of small trees as recommended by the planning board staff along the westerly side of the property. The surrounding neighborhood is a mixed use, including many commercial businesses with several automobile sales and with restaurants. We did receive today a letter of support from the Pine Point Council after several times going there, explaining in detail what happened and what we'd like to do. So we received that letter today and that's been forwarded to Phil. We feel that the highest and best use of the property is to have those five buildings remain. And the practical solution is a zone change. So for those reasons, we would ask for the planning board's support.
Do the board members have any questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a handful of questions. First, you know, I want to make sure that we don't set a bad precedent here where people are building on, you know, it was Residence B and now they built a business and, you know, and I don't even know how many number of years ago this was. And now they are coming back and we're saying, oh, okay. Well, since it's already built, we'll do this own change. The first thing I want to ask is, so were any plans provided to the city engineering division or DPW for review for this?
Levi, can you answer that?
Nothing, nothing was provided until we, till we realized this issue that, that we hadn't seek permission. We went in to get, to try to get that, you know, done in arrears and go get electrical permits, DPW permits and everything. And the first step they wanted us to do was get the zone changed first and then go back and get all of our permits aligned. They have opened up an electrical permit for us that they, they gave us the permit and we're going to keep it open until we got this part handled. And they said, come back to them and we were going to get all that, those items taken care of.
But these, these are already built. Are they in use?
They are in use and they're, they're pre-engineered buildings that, that come pre-built. It, it wasn't like they were constructed on the ground. They are built within code and everything at a, at a facility offsite and then brought in and put, you know, they're, they're a modular movable building, basically.
So, so what, so what permits are you actually trying to get if they're already installed?
Well, we need that, we need the zone, the zone change. And then we were, we were told we would need an electrical permit because we did put lighting fixtures on them for safety and security. So that will need to be permitted. And then if necessary, we would seek a building permit as well.
So you guys are going to have to submit something to the DPW for record. I mean, we needed to take a look at this. I mean, you guys, I, I measured it out. It's, you know, over an acre. It's like 50,000 square feet and it was impervious. I mean, it was dirt back there. Now it's all paved. Not to mention, I have no idea whether you guys got your proper permits with the EPA, Wetlands Protection Act, Clean Water Act. That's all stuff that you guys would have had to, to get. I mean, A, you're working within, you know, I don't know, it looks like 25 feet of the edge of a wetland. So you're well within the, the 100-foot buffer. I mean, did have, you talked to conservation?
I don't believe we have. I thought we were 100 feet away.
I mean, you can, if you pull up the city G I, G I S, there's a layer you can turn on and, I mean, you're 25 feet.
Luca, we lost.
We lost him.
Yeah, I lost that.
So while we're bringing him back, can I just piggyback after what he said? When was this done? How long ago?
There's certain requirements we have for, you know, stormwater storage and recharge. You know, there's, I have a lot of questions. I think that, you know, something needs to be provided to the DPW so we can A, have it on record and B, make sure that, you know, the requirements that the state has were, were met.
Understood.
Rosemary, do you want to ask your question now?
Yeah, this is just piggybacking. When was this done? How long ago? The fact that they're there, they're being used.
I believe it was two years ago or so. I'd have to, to nail it down for sure. There were some previous, previous management people, people different in charge than who we have now and, and, you know, they, they made a move to, to increase some income for that facility so that we could, you know, pay some more people and, and get business going there and serve the community. And, and again, with the pre-engineered buildings, I, I think they, they thought that because they kind of are built within permits and stuff and, and more like a shed type of thing, didn't realize the magnitude of what they needed to do. So I would, I would say two years ago is a safe bet.
I think I'm just flabbergasted that they would go, we're not talking about a little thing. You know, we're talking about a, a good sized business here and a well-known business. And to just sort of add to it, just without talking to anyone just amazes me.
And, and we certainly, I, I don't disagree. And that's why we're here trying to get this all rectified. In, in fact, I believe we, we outed ourselves, to be honest with you, you know, seeking for the permits to get refinancing and we went and looked in the files and stuff of that nature. So it, it wasn't a secret we were trying to keep. We, we exposed it our, on our own and, and realized we made a mistake and are trying to do what we can to, you know, get it on track and, and seek forgiveness. And I understand what Mr. Menino said about not setting a precedent. I certainly agree with that and you know, want, want to do what's right to get this behind us and, and, you know, move forward.
And I wanted to say, by no means am I saying that I want you guys to tear this stuff down. I mean, it's already there. It's being used. I.
Leo, you cut out.
Yeah, Luca.
Excuse me, cut out again. Let me also reiterate that I, I'm absolutely flabbergasted.
So I, I, unless there's any other questions that the board might have, I really would like to consider, you know, tabling this until we get some more information on our end.
Sure.
Well, it is going to be, it will be, I, I do just want to stress that, that I, I get the concerns of the board, but I, you know, I, I, in addition to the zone change, it is, I think it has been made clear to the, to the owners that all the other requirements that were needed in order to do this in the first place are going to need to be obtained as well. So this is one step in the process. You know, I, I, I understand the, you know, to me, I, I'm kind of in the same boat that, you know, I think a call to the city would have, would have solved this, but obviously that wasn't done. So, but, but I do want to stress that in addition to the, to the zone change, you know, all the requirements that would have been under any development of this size, but would still need to be ultimately obtained. So, so that's to me is whether, you know, the, the zone change is a piece of that. So again, I, this will be continued until the 5th for the vote. We can certainly have further discussions as well, but you know, it is a, it is to me, in my opinion anyway, inappropriate land use. I'm not exactly sure why the rear portion of this particular parcel was owned Residence B in the first place, but it was. So it is, it is a, getting the zone is, is kind of, in my opinion as well, kind of the first piece in order to, to rectify this situation.
Thank you, Phil. I mean, I don't disagree that it's probably an appropriate use. I'm still flabbergasted that they would go ahead and do this without even thinking that they had to contact anybody at the city. And I recognize that you are not the person who did that. So for the next time, because this meeting will obviously be continued, I'd like to have information when you come back that you have definitely spoken to DPW and you have an idea of what you need to do to meet the satisfaction of DPW and it probably would not. An idea of what you need to do to meet the satisfaction of DPW. And it probably would not be. A bad thing to co- uh connect with the Conservation Commission, even though you believe you are. Within the hundred foot um setback just to cover CYA.
We'll do both.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do any of the board members have anything else they would like to? Raise questions or concerns? Then I would accept a motion to continue this hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Phil, if you do roll call.
Uh, voting to continue zone change, number three, two, two, seven. Uh, Mr. Cunningham is absent, Mr. Minio.
No.
Uh, Mr. Daniele.
Yes.
This Warren.
Yes.
This Steve Filippo.
Yes.
Mr. Florian.
Yes.
This McQuaid.
Yes.
And Ms. Choi absent. The motion will be continued to January fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so just so the board's aware, I I do not have any non-sub plans at this time, so. Um, you know, just to give the board a heads up, I I'm still not a hundred percent sure. When and if we will be going back to face to face. Um, you know, I I as I indicated a couple of meetings ago, there was talk about the city council going back. In January. I don't know if that's still the case. And obviously with with the cases kind of rising. Um, I'm gonna continue the Zoom meetings until told otherwise. So, you know, I had I had mentioned we might start back in February, but. At this time, I'm still not a hundred percent sure that's gonna happen. So I think we just need to wait and wait and see and get a, you know, I won't, I won't do anything until we get a directive. Um, from somebody on whether we should be back to face to face or not. So at this point, the January meetings would definitely be in in in. Uh, via Zoom. And at this point, I I'm I'm probably the February as well, but I will let you know as we move forward. Um, but other than that, um, I hope everybody has a very nice holiday.
And. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Are we doing the minutes?
We did the minutes already.
Yeah, we did those.
How did I miss that?
I jumped the gun an hour ago, but we did, we did.
We did do them. And I will accept a a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Bye.
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 Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody.